Item for discussion is an update on the Build Your Better Here campaign with Mr. Adam Welch of Hemisphere Design.
Good evening.
Evening, welcome.
Thank you. I was expecting, oh, there's Becky. I don't know if you're gonna do a warm up or if I should just jump in.
I can just make just a couple of comments before we get started, just to let you know where we've been up until this point. And so in 2018, early 2018, along with the Communications Department, we looked at hiring a marketing firm to assist in promoting Lakewood as a great place to live, work, learn, recreate, and also to do business. We wanted to change some of the old perceptions from years ago that remained and simply were not true, particularly with regards to crime and our educational system. So we put out an RFP for a marketing firm and we ended up hiring Hemisphere for some initial work. And then taking into consideration Council's vision and strategic plan. With the help of Hemisphere, we were able to evaluate our current assets, materials, and marketing goals. And so the first part of the work was to conduct stakeholder interviews. And we developed a SWOT analysis, a brand anthem, a campaign tagline, and identified our audience and our key campaign messages and images. And so then we recommended a Build Your Better Here campaign, which followed 2019 and 2020. And our last update to Council was January 2020. The Hemisphere Design Team, I just wanted to mention, includes Josh Killen, who is digital marketer, Paul Boyer, who concentrates on copywriting, strategic strategy, and storytelling. And then, of course, Adam Welsh, who's here tonight, President and Web Developer. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Adam now, who leads you through the body of work, as well as the performance and suggested next steps. So there you go, Adam.
Absolutely. That was a great intro. Thank you. Also, Lakewood resident, that's important. So yeah, and then is it true that everybody has seen the document that I'm going to share my screen with? Or I see some thumbs up and nodding. Okay, good. So I'm going to sort of fast track some of the things that Becky just talked about just now, and then spend more time talking about sort of the performance and how things have gone, if that's all right. Okay. Let me resize my screen here. Is that showing up for everybody?
Yes.
Head nods all around. Great. Okay. So yeah, overview, this is where I'll go kind of fast, but I think there's some important points here. The purpose of what we were doing is a brand awareness or sort of reshaping the brand for the city. So the metrics on such a thing are sometimes difficult. So, you know, one of the key performance indicators would be, you know, new businesses moving here or people buying homes here, things like that, and generally changing the perception. So we have a couple of metrics on how we tracked that, but just to sort of throw out early that this is a brand awareness campaign, not necessarily tied to a specific product. So as was introduced, we created the brand and the messaging in 19, met with the Council, shared our plan. And this, what we're going to talk about now is how we executed the plan. So converting long-termers, so current residents into brand ambassadors and starters, who are people who would ideally move to Lakewood and sort of talked about housing situations. And then builders is the category that we're calling people who are going to start businesses or are sort of in the foundational phase. As was discussed, we came up with four personas. And these are equally the types of people that we're speaking to and people that are sort of in the community already. So again, starters are maybe young families, builders are maybe our business folks, long-termers, existing residents, and then warriors was a big category. I'm not going to go into all the details. There are lots of documents we've created along the way that go into a lot more detail for those, but happy to field some questions maybe at the end. And then the value proposition we came up with early in the process was this American dream and being achievable for all people at various levels. And very sort of top level analysis of our approach to the whole thing being we created assets, we created videos and websites and logos and things like that. We went out on lots of different channels, primarily digital channels. And this pie chart over here is representative of what our plan was and what we actually executed, which is to say about 25% was reserved for print. We're sort of a digital agency primarily. I'm a graphic designer, so I love print and paper and design. But as far as reaching the audiences, we're trying to go after. Print is kind of a tough one. And then measurement and reporting is key. So at the beginning, we came up with our performance indicators. And this document has, if you've already seen it, lots and lots of data. We're going to sort of skim the top of all that, but at any point, I'm happy to dig deeper. So what were the brand elements that were created? Early in 20 would be the logo, the brand name, which marries up with the city logo, the Build Your Better Here website, and then the Build Your Better Here sort of brand anthem video. And this came in a couple of different flavors. We had the 90-second version. We had the 60-second version and the 30-second. But this is really, you know, telling the new story of Lakewood and, you know, the positive stories to be told there. I threw this slide in here because it's important to note that you might be aware we had COVID and that we had all these plans and we had it all mapped out. And then COVID happened. So these were some of the Zoom backgrounds. Maybe some of you used them, but this was just a way to sort of keep the campaign going right when we were, you know, shutting things down and trying to figure out how do we pivot. Luckily, again, we were doing a digital strategy, so that this actually worked out rather well, that we had the ability to pivot on some of the assets. Not a huge ROI here, but this is definitely, again, in a brand awareness thing, the more these things get out there. I believe these were also offered to the public. I don't have records on how many times it was downloaded and used, but just one more, you know, thing in the pile. Speaking of the 25% of the budget, we did dedicate to print ads. The three primary publications we used were Western Real Estate Business, Business Expansion, and Northwest Military, which is a JBLM magazine, is how you probably know it on the front end. And we did a breakdown of the costs that went into those things. And then for us, you know, what's the ROI? What's the result of that? So the landing page on the website, there's sort of the, you can find the website by just going to buildyourbetterhere.com. But we had some hidden pages that you couldn't get to unless you clicked on an ad or you saw an ad here. So you can see we have slash W R E B or slash J B L M. So that allows us to have sort of pure data that, you know, this ad directly led to this page that you couldn't get to any other way. So our analysis was in our warriors category, thinking of our personas, was the highest engagement that we got. So for probably the cheapest price, we got 824 people to go to the landing pages. So again, thinking of brand awareness, that's 824 clicks or views that, you know, people became aware of that. It's a little harder to know the value of the seven people that, you know, went to the landing page for business expansion. They might be a more qualified lead, you know, maybe they're very interested and that led to something. And we're going to get into that a little bit later on. How do we know what level of interest somebody had beyond just going to a page? Yeah, I'm going to finish out this section, then I'll stop and I'll field some questions. So in addition to print, we did radio. This was based off of the brand anthem video that I shared earlier, but we got to do on 7/10 a homepage takeover. So we had this tile graphic, we had a banner graphic, we had links off to the website. And for the investment of 1250, we got 107 people to click through to, I think there was a unique URL for this as well, so we could track that. So I think ROI on this one was pretty good. Just hearing things on the radio, you know, getting the name out there, getting the campaign out there. We felt that this was pretty successful. And then, as I mentioned, digital is where we were pretty heavy budget-wise, time-wise, and in this report. So without boring you with lots and lots and lots of data, I'm going to focus mostly on this top page, which is a summary page. So total impressions of all of the digital ads that we did on, you know, Facebook and Google and LinkedIn and all that. So 4 million impressions. So that's not a high value thing, because you can see an ad and just scroll past it. But it is something. So, you know, 4 million impressions, views. The video's all told, so not just the brand anthem video, but we created a series of video ads. Got 2 million. So that's a higher metric of engagement. Typically, people have to watch almost to the end for this to count. And then total clicks, that, you know, you see an ad, who cares? But if you click on it, that demonstrates some level of interest. So to get almost 39,000 clicks through, we see that as demonstrating engagement and interest. So to focus in on Facebook specifically, Facebook and Instagram are essentially the same thing. You launch ads on one and it shows up on the other platform. So I'm just going to focus on this left column. The, I think the interesting, exciting, encouraging thing is these 2,000 likes on the Facebook page. Because again, people encounter an ad and it could be very passive, but this indicates that they saw it and they engaged with it. They thought that this was a positive thing and they wanted to, you know, support it or something. Google and YouTube, again, are essentially the same thing. You start advertising on one platform and there's a lot of crossover. You can share data back and forth, things like that. Impressions again is about 2 million. That's just, you know, how many times the video was loaded? But 1.3 million, you know, actually viewed it, you know, sat there and wanted to do it. I think we've all waited for the five-second countdown, right? And then you leave as fast as you can. So these are people who stuck longer than the five-second countdown, just to see what it was about. And then after that, you know, these ads allow you to click through. So, you know, 3,000 people thought, all right, I'll see what's going on. I'll dig a little deeper. And again, that always goes back to the website and these dedicated landing pages that you can't get to just organically. You'd have to click on an ad to get to those pages. And then, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to talk about the demographics. The Facebook and Instagram are primarily for our long-termers and starters. This is for our warriors. It's just sort of how the demographics worked out. This was focused primarily on warriors. And then LinkedIn is focused on businesses. It's just sort of become the social media platform that if you're trying to connect B2B or, you know, the decision makers in an organization, LinkedIn is the place to go. It's a lot harder to get people excited, because usually you're just building your resume or, you know, following a smaller group of people. But the PDF downloads, which I'll get to later, was our demonstration of intent. So, you know, you could see an ad on LinkedIn, maybe it's sort of passive, but what we're trying to track is if you're interested enough to download a PDF about this, that says, okay, you might be interested in taking the next step about moving your business there or expanding or hiring, things like that. And then the last bit on social media is more of sort of the posting that you might see. So the ads show up in a different way on Facebook than these ads. Midway through the year, as you can see, Q1 and Q2 up here, we would boost a post, which is just like, you know, you post something on Facebook and then Facebook says, don't you want to put some money behind this? So that's these three over here. These are video ads. You can see we've got our sort of brand anthem. We've got our soldiers here. And then some of these, we focused on very specific things that were happening in the city. So Pierce County Trails Day, Fun in the Sun was the dog park and things like that. And just sort of gauging how people responded to these things. So overall, you know, our reach, we got about 29,000 sort of people, individuals. And then the 30,000 is the, actually, Paul, this is Paul's page, so I'm going to try to paraphrase what he would say. But the 10-second view, I think, is the most important thing. You stuck it for longer than the five-second countdown or whatever. Halfway through the year, we pivoted and decided that just boosting posts wasn't the right strategy. This is somewhat responding to COVID. But we moved to a likes campaign. So the whole point of these ads was please like the City of Lakewood page. So if you watch a video and then the call to action of this is to like. So that's where we see with this 1,000 additional page likes. That just gives us a larger audience when we're advertising to talk to more people. So that's the purpose behind that. And you can see there's a breakdown of all of those things. I think I've made it. Yep, okay. I've got a whole second section, but I'm going to pause right there. You got to listen to me talk for a lot. I'm happy to go back to any of these pages, field some questions. The next section is really going to break down. Okay, that's nice that you got a lot of views and clicks, but you know, what does that mean? So.
Any questions for Mr. Welch? We're dazzled so far.
That's what I want. That's great. I do, I see some head nodding, so that's, that's good. Okay, well, as we push forward, I think I'll provoke some more questions. So all those things happened. That's great. It's measurable. But what we're hoping is to sort of break that down into the impact. So there's a lot going on on this page, and I'm sure the type is pretty small on your monitor. So I'm just going to give you the highlights again. This pie chart over here tells us that this is traffic going to the website, you know. We built a website. How did people get there? 64% is from social. So all those ads that we were doing and pushing things out, 64% of the people that went to the website came from a link on social. The next one down would be direct. So people who literally typed in buildyourbetterhere.com, so they maybe saw a print ad. They were looking for the words specifically. And then display ads would be the, not just social posts, but the probably YouTube, Google links. Up here in this chart, was there a question? No. Okay. This table here, we can see the top pages start with this LP. That's our internal language for landing page. So slash the homepage. And typically, you know, we built hundreds of websites and the homepage is almost always the number one thing. It's just, you know, where everybody starts. So for this to be at 1,600 for the homepage and the landing page is to be at 15,000, that says that the landing pages were driving engagement. If we weren't, you know, spending money and doing these things, people wouldn't have gotten to these pages. So better business and better living were the two categories that we'd sort of separated things into. So, you know, if you're interested in the building your business here or, you know, starting a life here, kind of a thing. And then better industrial is a drill down and better development is a drill down. I'll get to those. But generally speaking, the landing pages outperformed the organic pages. We can see the state of Washington here. Our footprint for a lot of this stuff was the Puget Sound Region corridor. We didn't necessarily refine it to that. We didn't constrain it to that, but that's where we got the most engagement. And as we'll talk about later on, inside the city itself got the highest engagement, which is great, because we're going for the long-termers and the starters. I'm going to jump to this timeline chart at the bottom, because I think that that's got two really important messages. So this is 12 months. This is all of 2020. So we started the campaign and you can see we had some really high highs and the ads are all fresh and the content is all fresh. And then throughout the year, there's this diminishing return. So you can imagine that once you see the video, you've seen the video and it might pop up again and you might watch it again. But there's a diminishing return on the assets. So we need to keep doing things like Pierce County Parks Day or dog parks or, you know, schools or talk about some things. But overall, we need to keep investing in the assets. Otherwise, people get bored of looking at the same thing. And then the other thing, and I'm going to zoom in on this one, if my computer will let me. Let's see. We don't have to do the micro print thing. So as COVID was ramping up and the city was making decisions about, you know, what's open and closed, we decided in March to stop doing the first-time buyer ads. You know, the real estate market was doing some stuff. We decided that's probably not the best use of dollars. And then we had a tough conversation as the Black Lives Matter movement was happening. We felt it wasn't the best thing to be advertising happy, happy sort of stories. Let's be respectful of what's happening. And when we cut off the advertising spend, you can see that the campaign dropped off noticeably. And then, once we felt like it was appropriate to start advertising again, we started back up and the budget was essentially twice. So that the money we didn't spend during that time, we double-spent in the period after that. And you can see there's a huge spike, but it actually does drive the movement. So we basically pay Facebook and Google and LinkedIn to get eyeballs on things. The more money you throw at it, the more, you know, sort of investment you get back, which is also echoed here, which is the brand video itself. So what we were just looking at was the website in total. Here is just the video itself, which is sort of the key storytelling piece of the whole campaign. And I will zoom in again, so we can see those same time points. When we stopped the spend, traffic drops way off. When we double the spend, traffic goes way up. So that's sort of the lesson there. But also, you know, once you've seen the video, it's not too interesting to keep watching it over. So we'll get to that. And then also, we did turn everything off on January 1. And you can see that it sort of just sort of trickles there. So if we don't put any money behind it, it will still keep going, but it's at a pretty small level. I alluded to this earlier twice, but on the website, we had the better business page. And some of these pages were public and some of these pages were only accessible through an ad. On those pages, we had PDFs. And this was our way of saying, okay, you've seen an ad. You know, we've got hundreds of thousands of people who saw the ad. And then we've got tens of thousands of people who clicked on the ad. And just because you go to a page doesn't mean you're necessarily interested. But if you're willing to download this PDF, that indicates that, okay, I'm pretty serious about this. My business is in the, you know, industrial category, the developer category, retail, professional, et cetera. And you can see, just sort of at the bottom line here, 620 people downloaded the industrial PDF, which is a 14-page brochure, basically, that says, you know, opportunity zones and economic this and, you know, incentive that. Essentially, the documents are all the same, except for the cover and some of the creative stuff. So by far, you know, the industrial was the most popular. It's hard to know if that's COVID-related, right? So retailers not really shopping around during COVID for a new place to start their business, you know, hesitant? Or is this reflective of, you know, how people see the city? So so for us, that's pretty encouraging to create these. I mean, the cost was very low, but to get people here in the first place, we had to spend money. In contrast to the better business, we have the better living, right? So the website is sort of in these two pieces. So people who would like to either upgrade, you know, their current residence and they want to buy a lakefront house, or, you know, people are moving to Lakewood for the first time. So for those two people, we had this way of measuring, you know, do you want to click on Redfin or Zillow? As just a way of like finding homes in my area that fit my price point. So this table is a little hard to dissect, but I'll give a shot. In our starters category, we had the Redfin link and the Zillow link. If you found those pages organically, you're just surfing the web. We got 87 and 113. For the pages that we boosted, we sent people there through ads, we got dramatically more engagement. So the people who clicked on an ad, got to the page, they were more interested in clicking on a Zillow or Redfin link. And then our upgraders, so targeted ads to current residents, much the same pattern, but not as dramatic. So more of a, you know, this is about 50% increase. This is less than that. So but it demonstrates a pretty clear trend that our primary engaged audience would be the starters who are getting there through paid ads. Our least engaged would be people who currently live here that just sort of found it, which is maybe somewhat intuitive, right? And you're just shopping around, you know how to get to Zillow or Redfin. The last step in our sort of measuring engagement process was we'd set up a series of phone numbers. So depending on which PDF you clicked on, which page you were on, if it was a public page or a hidden page, we had a series of different phone numbers. And that's somebody who is really, really bought in, right? They clicked on an ad, they got to a page, they downloaded a PDF, and they said, yeah, I'm going to give Becky a call. And the form was also on the page, but I think this 510 basically says a lot of robots found this page and filled out this form. I don't think that there was a huge amount of high-quality leads that came from that. So we're guessing around 2% of those were valuable. And then an email list signup. Again, this is somebody who found the page and found it valuable enough that they decided, yeah, send me more information on a continuing basis. So these are areas to continue to follow up on. I don't know if Becky has any stats on, you know, if any of these people closed the deal. I remember there was maybe one or two that were pretty high value. And then I'm getting close to the end here. Well, I'll stop there. So as far as our funnel, we did a bunch of ads, people saw them, people engaged with them. And then the website became our place to really track how deeply invested people were. So any questions about sort of that funnel that we created?
Questions from Council.
I have a question.
Yep.
Mr. Whalen.
So thanks, Adam. So here, you know, on the business side, I'm somewhat integrally involved in the whole marketing pitch. So when you build the funnel for these, you know, kind of lead abundance, are we capturing emails or other contact information so that we can push out information more intentionally for those that we capture?
Yeah, I mean, there was a conversation early on about gating these PDFs. So that to get to that, you would need to put in a, an email address or something. We felt it was.
Drive to here link, that way you receive and collect potential, you know, folks that we would push more information out to.
Right, yeah. We decided that what we actually wanted was people to, you know, demonstrate sort of intent. If we felt stronger about, you know, the numbers and how they were going as far as, I think there's sort of this COVID drop-off as well. But so we decided not to gate this content. So not to say you need to give us your email address in order to get that. So this page here is really where we were trying to collect that information. But it was pretty low. I think that the people that were willing to give out their email address, so, you know, 42 or so, it's not a huge number.
Any other questions?
Tamir.
So.
Moss.
Moss.
Yes. I was just curious, on the 510 by the phone numbers, is it possible that the realtors could increase, show that increase?
Yeah. So the phone calls go to Becky and the contact forms, I believe, went to Becky. So any specifics on, you know, what came from that? You know, it could be that if there was a, I do know that there was a real estate conversation at one point in the year. So the short answer is yes. But the value of those things, and if it led to something, that gets passed where I know. But yeah, I do think that the real estate market was really strange this year, right? And I mean, it was really hot. But there's all these new rules about, you know, can you go into homes and how do we do with the whole thing? So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Newton, you've been quiet tonight. Do you have anything there?
Yes, Mr. May. I just wanted to add, in terms of the questions related to follow-up, as Adam mentioned, there were not, there was a low percentage of numbers of submission through the website and that were actual valid, you know, requests. But those have been followed up on. And then I think the most value out of that was partly, you know, the signup for additional information. So we did provide that back. And I would just say that, you know, overall, you know, a lot of spam, of course, particularly during the COVID, a lot of folks reaching out because they wanted to sell products. And so we had a lot of that, too. There were spikes for that information. But I feel like we did get a few really good leads. It's hard to track whether or not those actually can be matched to projects that we currently have.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Okay. I have, oh, I had a few more things.
Okay.
I'll reshare. Sorry, I just, I love the spotlight.
You get more than three-minute public comment.
Okay. I also didn't know how long I had. I think I have three slides left, so I'll keep it tight. But this is important. So our assignment was a brand awareness. So how do we know, you know, if we're moving the needle on brand awareness? So we conducted a survey in January, and then we conducted a second survey in December. And we can see that, you know, extremely favorable went up about 5. And, um, we can see that, um, you know, extremely favorable went up about 5%. Uh, very favorable down one, and then, uh, somewhat favorable is up 2%. So as far as current residents, you know, there, there is, uh, the, the needle is moving. Um, I think that the most important thing is this net promoter score, which is sort of a, um, national standardized way of understanding, um, sort of a, a, a brand awareness. So it's a, an, an all-up score. Um, basically, um, how likely are you to recommend this to a friend? So, you know, me as a person, do I vouch for this kind of a thing? So our residents, uh, went from 13 to 23, so up 10 points. Um, and that, I think, says something very good, um, despite, um, COVID and, you know, all the things. I, I think there was a, a point somewhere in mid-year where, um, there was a, a, a lot of negativity happening on social media and, and, uh, that had to sort of be addressed. You know, decisions the city was making, things like that. So if overall in our survey, you know, we, we went up 10 points, that's great. Um, in contrast, we have the non-residents. We, we, we separated the two, um, audiences in our survey. Um, we see the same sort of trend. So, you know, extremely favorable is up 9% and then somewhat favorable is up 6%. Um, obviously that leaves very favorable down 11. Um, but in the net promoter score, um, a negative 28 is not a great score, um, but it moved up. So, um, and, and we, uh, we feel like the, the, the participants we got in our survey were statistically valid. So, um, this, this represents a, um, a group of people. I do see a raised hand. I'll, I'll, I'll pause for a raised hand.
And I can't see with the shared screen.
Well, yeah, I, I just had a question on this, uh, slide you're discussing about the how likely is it that you would recommend Lakewood? And the non-residents are in the negative and the residents are in the positive. But what's actually the scale? I mean, is it from minus 100 to 100, or is it minus 50 to 50? Or what is the possible scale there?
See if I can scroll slowly. It's, it's negative 100 to positive 100. Um, I don't know if that, does that help?
Uh, yeah, a- and, and I guess that so negative scores are not good, but really, what is zero?
Uh, yeah, it, it is-
What does that mean, zero?
Yeah. Uh, neutral. So, you know, it's, it's sort of, um, do you, we, we sort of like, do you have detractors? People, and, and I think that's the perception we are trying to overcome. So people who say, nope, Lakewood's full of crime, uh, gangs, drugs, prostitution, right? Um, those are your detractors, so that the public perception is negative. If you hit zero, people are ambivalent. They're kind of like, I don't know, you know, it's, it's fine or whatever. So, um, you know, the, the public perception outside of the city is still somewhat negative. Um, but if we get to our residents, you know, people who have lived here, um, experienced, you know, the, the parks or public safety or, or what have you. Um, uh, this is so hard for me to scroll. Let me see. Um, we have, um, advocates, uh, people who are sort of our brand ambassadors and they're very, they're positive. So that, that number, you know, went up some degree. Um, I'd say it'd be great to be at sort of 50%. Um, there, there are some benchmarks and I could probably get back to you as far as, you know, a municipality, what is a, an average, uh, net promoter score? Um, but yeah, th- th- these would be people who are, um, advocates.
So, so what did these scores tell us, tell you? Uh, in terms of informing um, a next wave of activity?
Um, good question. So, yeah, baseline is that we want to make sure that, uh, if we're investing dollars and time into something, that it's working and, you know, not going backward. Uh, so we have evidence that, that, uh, if we kept doing what we're doing, um, the, the needle should keep moving forward. Um, and then we do have some new thoughts on what we would do, um, sort of i- if, in the 2021 realm. Um, so that the, the lessons we learned on the previous pages, um, we would just continue to re- refine what was working really well. Stop doing the things that weren't working as well, things like that. So, um, chasing these numbers, you know, year over year is sort of our accountability.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. This may be more for Becky than for Adam, but Becky, anecdotally, are you getting feedback from, from folks who call for uh, information that they saw or heard about Lakewood from the video? Sometimes it's kind of nice to anecdotally qualify, not necessarily quantify, but qualify as some of the leads we receive.
Yeah, so, Mr. Whalen, I, I have been over the, the last year, have getting some calls, mostly, I think, um, I think more from peers and other cities, uh, other developers that we're working with, that I talk to on a, a regular basis or, um, mention that they've seen the Bell, you know, Build Your Better Here campaign in various places, the video. So I have heard, heard, heard that type of feedback, um, on it.
I assume, I assume they're bullish on it and appreciate the, the place they're investing in is, is coming out and doing some positive branding.
Yes, that's my feeling. I don't get a lot, but, um, I, I feel like those folks that I'm working with, um, brokers, um, as well as the developers, um, businesses that are calling me, um, that are interested in, in Lakewood. It definitely is a positive to see that the, the city is promoting, you know, ourselves and we're interested in, and doing business, we're interested in, uh, making a better community, uh, for, for the future. So I would say that, um, there has been a number of, uh, positive calls and conversations around that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Ms. Farmer.
Um, tell me more about the survey and how you found people to take it.
Um, yeah, I, I have, um, a couple of documents that I can share. This is really just the, the summary. Um, I think that the, the full thing was, um, 12 or 15 questions. And, um, we, we tried to be, um, very consistent between the first one and the second ones. We asked the same questions both times. Um, uh, and both times, I believe it was a digital ad spend. So we used some of the budget that we were using for, um, the, the promotional ads to, uh, invite people into this process. So, um, I think primarily it was Facebook, but I, I have about a, a five-page report on who we engaged and who responded and things like that. Um, I, I think, um, on Facebook, you know, the, the demographics there are, um, skew slightly more female. Um, a- and then, um, again, the, we were able to bisect between residents and non-residents as, as sort of one of the, the key factors there. Um, so yes, I think the short answer is, uh, we use some of our digital ad spend to bring people in.
And I think on your next slide, there were, that's interesting, the non-residents, the second time around, they were busy Christmas shopping or something.
Right, yeah, and, uh-
There weren't too many people interested in taking the survey.
Yeah, we, again, we wanted, uh, good pure data, but, uh, if we had waited till January, we probably wouldn't have been able to form the report and, and give it to you. So, um, yeah, we're not opposed to, um, uh, doing another one, you know, sort of here in February and, and try to figure out a, a new baseline. But yeah, it's, uh, the November through December is a really tough time to get people's attention.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So, um, statistical significance on a self-selected survey, how does that, how does that work?
Um, yeah, yeah, um, I, I was sort of basing that off of, um, we just did a survey that was, um, a statewide survey and, uh, of, um, I don't know, however, 5 million people or something in our state. Um, uh, to get to 90% plus or minus, uh, 4% uh, statistical validity, we only needed 333 people. Um, so we were able to get that. So, um, here, you, I, I, I threw, put the numbers here on the side, um, how many people participated in each. So, um, yeah, I think, uh, depending on the time of year, it's more or less statistically valid, but you're right. It is, um, totally a, um, uh, self-reporting, self-selected sort of group of people.
Yeah, it's interesting that 300 mark is kind of magic. And so it, you could have this absolutely giant pool or you could have something very small. But if you have 300, it's like, it's suddenly signi- statistically significant. So, thank you for your work on this.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else as I scroll through? Wave your hand, raise your hand. Well, thanks again.
Um, I have a, uh-
Are we at the end of this, we have come to the end of the summary here?
Uh, yes, so the, the next pages, and, and I'm, I'm happy to go through these or not go through these. Um, the last two pages are just a summary of, um, sort of the successes we had. You know, uh, we, we set a plan up, we executed the plan, it worked great. Uh, the, the limitations, we had, um, you know, COVID and, um, it's hard to measure a brand awareness other than, you know, with these surveys and things like that. So, um, I can go through all the details, but you also have the document. Um, and then we just sort of had our recommendation for the next step. So, um, I'm happy to go into detail or leave you there.
Why don't you move to the recommendations?
Okay.
I think you summarized it pretty well as we, we went along and we can read it, but-
Sure.
Recommendations might generate some questions.
Good, um, yeah, so our plan, um, would not be to rock the boat as far as the budget goes, just basically keep that as it is. Um, but, uh, learn some lessons of, um, what worked really well and carve off the stuff that didn't work very well. So for example, um, some of the print stuff, you know, we were 75% digital and 25% print. Um, but the print, um, just didn't have a huge return on the investment. So I, I think we need to have a footprint there to some degree. Um, but mixing in things like radio, we, we think could be pretty successful as far as a, a broad message to a broad audience. It was pretty cost-effective. Um, so the other bit is, as we saw with the video assets and the, um, the website in general, there's a declining trend. Um, and we attribute that to just the assets getting stale. People have seen it and, and don't get excited. So, um, this list over here, um, would sort of be our recommended action items. So refresh the brand assets, um, keep those interesting, exciting. Um, uh, fine-tune the outreach to the builders. So this, this is our business community, um, ones that have, uh, uh, stake in, um, starting a business or growing a business. Um, intensify the outreach to the starters. We saw that that was working pretty great, so we would lean on that, uh, further. Um, the warriors, we saw that through the print. Um, there was a number of, um, you know, we didn't do a, a summer fest and we didn't do some of the Fourth of July stuff. So, um, I think that as, uh, COVID restrictions, um, loosen up, you know, we can really engage the warriors, uh, more. Um, and then the long-termers, um, we still think that, um, creating the brand ambassadors, um, people who get excited about the place that they live and telling the world about that. So those are the, the strategies, uh, that, uh, we think are, um, a good next step. Um, I'm going to gloss over, I, I think we, yeah, a question or comment?
Questions? Scrolling, scrolling.
So, yeah, I think generally what we're saying is we're, we're going to stay the course, um, but, um, make sure that it's, uh, continues to be successful by reinvesting in the, the assets and the channels that were working well.
Great. And Ms. Newton, do you have any recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think what's interesting too is that, uh, back a year and a half or so ago, when we first started, uh, we had the idea to refresh the brand after a year or so and, uh, fine-tuning it to builders. And, and we had commented that, um, you know, as we, uh, get more exposure and we're starting to see more businesses come in, um, and the timing, um, as you all know, uh, lots of industrial development and, um, new, um, restaurants and so forth are, are starting to come into Lakewood and the South Sound area. We kind of anticipated that to be the case. And so I think it is a, a really good time to refresh that and, um, you know, look at how we can continue to reach to those builders and work on, you know, who are those mixed-use developers that are going to be looking at the downtown in particular and being those first mixed-use projects for the downtown. Um, also, obviously, as, uh, JBLM, um, and folks that are, um, coming out of the service, starting families, staying here in the area, it'll be good to, um, increase our outreach to them. Many of them may be starting businesses and so forth. So, um, you know, we anticipated this might be where we're at, at this time. So, um, I'm excited to see the activity and, um, it would be really great, particularly in the brand awareness and creating the, um, sense of place and community for Lakewood to continue some form of outreach in multiple areas. Um, you know, digital, radio, print, as Adam had suggested, I think, would be a good, good mix. Um, and the social media seems to have a greater return on investment, uh, for, for us. And, um, so creating that brand exposure, as you all know, over time, it's, um, it takes a long time to, to change perceptions. And so we would like to continue and maybe concentrate more on the digital and ad spend and add in, um, a little piece of the radio as well. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to, um, also work on two things. One is maybe getting more participation in the surveys, um, both the beginning and the end, um, so that we get, um, more participation with that. And, um, um, then also tracking it a little bit better. So seeing if we can, over time, as we get more input or more coming through the website, figuring out a way to do more of the follow-up as, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Whalen and others had mentioned. Um, so being able to do more follow-up, we might be able to add that into our work for the next year. Uh, should you, uh, decide to, to move forward with this. But I think it's important to continue that effort and, uh, keep, you know, everybody thinking about Lakewood.
Thank you, Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this, uh, a question on the starters. It says, intensify outreach to starters. And then I see on page seven, it kind of explains social media, real estate apps. But in general, what does intensify outreach to starters mean? Or how does that translate?
Yeah, um, I, I think that it, it is specific. I mean, as far as an actionable item, it would be, um, probably more social media ads. Um, I, I do wonder about, um, other platforms beyond, uh, because I, I don't think our starters are necessarily on Facebook. Um, they, they might be on Instagram, they're more likely going to be on a, a Snapchat or maybe a TikTok or something like that. So, um, intensify meaning sort of, uh, the, the breadth of the, the channels we go out to. But maybe, um, in those toggles, um, how much of our, um, budget percentage-wise goes to them? So I would say that that, that goes up. Um, but we're also, uh, this is a conversation, um, so we're, we're happy to hear comments on where the priorities should be.
What's the, what's the age group? So a couple of questions. Eight, what's the, it, it says young, single, professional or middle-class parents of young families. So nowadays, what's the age group of the, of that? And are they people who are necessarily working in Pierce County? Or are they commuters to Thurston and King? Or, or am I asking too many questions?
Uh, those are great questions and I know some of those things. So I do know, you know, the, the Seattle urban core, um, is losing people to suburban areas, right? So it could be that those are, um, uh, young urbanites that are, you know, they've been working from home. So why would I work from home in a high-rise in Seattle? Why wouldn't I, you know, go somewhere more comfortable? Um, so the, the age range, um, I think might be, I, I think millennial might be too broad, uh, because a lot of the, um, the older millennials are probably more established. So, um, anybody who is, you know, looking for their place in the world, um, you know, so it's kind of a broad range and it's, it's maybe loosely defined.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Br- Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Welch, in, in your presentation, both in terms of what we've done and what we would do going forward, there was no mention whatsoever about reaching out to uh, minority communities in their own language or in their own publications. Is that because you assessed that that wouldn't be productive, uh, in a diverse community like Lakewood? Or was it not affordable, given the budget we gave you? Or what's the rationale there?
Um, I, I would say that we, we definitely saw that- I would say that we, we definitely saw that as a high value. I think one of the things we identified early on was the international district, you know, and, and the communities around that. And we very much wanted to engage that through the videos. So one of the things that I think makes a good narrative or story or video is people seeing themselves in it. So I think just as a baseline, we had diversity. But I think your question is more specifically to intentionally reaching out to those communities. So I think that, that the starters are very much that, as far as who, who could we bring into the, the story? I know we also had a, in our exploration process, talking about Native American communities and that there were some opportunities, but I think some of the things we earmarked for that, I can't remember what it's called. It's tied up with Summer Fest, the multicultural festival, something. That was a target that we were going to go after, but ultimately just because of the year, we, we remain pretty digital. So the, the social media channels are not specific to like our, our long-termers and our starters. Facebook changed the rules on can you target ethnicity when you're talking about housing? The answer is no. So that made it a little bit harder because the rules changed appropriately. But yeah, it's, it's a hard thing to do. I take your point about being intentional. So I think that's important to us as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Branstadter, we can certainly look at that and see if there are ways that we can specifically reach out to different individuals. We'll, we'll definitely take a look at that.
And I assume that, like most advertising, a lot of this is scalable?
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks again. We really appreciate the presentation, all the work you've done on this. It's given us some good insights. I think it's, it may not have reached the goal, but it's moved us closer to the goalpost.
Agreed. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate your questions and comments.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to a review of the fourth quarter 2020 police report with Chief Zarro.
Good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen and get our report going. Okay, Mayor Anderson, does that look right? I've got two different screens going here. That works?
Chief, if you change your display settings up at the top to switch, switch the screen, it will appear better for us.
You're side by side, so it's pretty slow.
How about that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, some, I'll get through this. I don't have a lot to go over, but what I do have is some statistically very good news for our fourth quarter and actually not just for the fourth quarter, but looking, you know, long-term for the past several years. This is some very good information. So on this data sheet, what you'll notice is a lot of negative signs next to the numbers, both going from third quarter to fourth quarter and going from year-to-date 19 to year-to-date 20. I have some, excuse me, graphic representations of, of some of this in some further slides, but negatives are good. And overall, as we'll see, crime is down, actually significantly in some areas. And it's nice to see, and there's only a couple of trouble spots really that we know about and we're trying to work on. So this is the slide that I've presented before where it shows sort of the comparison of percentage of crime to percentage of population per police district. Nothing really surprising here. District four is three and four really are our business districts. And you can see that's typically where you'll see your property crimes. And in some of the, the slides I'll show later, the property crimes are being driven by auto theft and shoplift. So it makes sense that we would see in District Four that a disproportionate amount in that district. So this is the one that's, I, I really am pleased to present, person crimes, which, you know, has always been something that I think, you know, the public kind of looks to as far as crime rates is, you know, how, how often are assaults and other things like that occurring? And we saw a significant drop off in the fourth quarter. I hope to keep that going, but this is, you know, we were flat somewhat for a very long time and then did see this very sharp drop off in the fourth that I was excited to share. And then property crimes. So property crimes, as I've said before, because those numbers, the raw numbers are so much greater than the person crimes, property crimes really drive our overall crime. And what we saw, and I think I presented this in the third quarter report, we saw a sharp increase throughout the year in vehicle theft and just general theft. A lot of that general theft had, was from businesses like shoplifting. I am pleased that, you know, I saw it while it's still on the higher side as a standalone number. And the fourth quarter, we did see a drop from third to fourth. So that, that was positive to see. And some of that, I think, might be due to the, the, you know, we did have for our holiday season, the retail theft emphasis out again. And I do think that probably had an impact on what we saw in the fourth quarter. And then again, just going back to just vehicle theft to show how much that really matches the, the previous slide. We did see a decrease from the third quarter, but it is still much higher than we like. And some of the decrease, I think what we'll see, hopefully continue to see a decrease is through arrests being made of rings that are, you know, going around stealing cars up and down the I-5 corridor and the 512 corridor and 167. A lot of that is being broken up by the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force on which Sergeant Jeff Carroll is the supervisor. And we also have a detective, Todd Jordan, that's assigned to that. So one of the things I've talked about, I think in the last quarter, you know, one of the things that we can attribute this to is when thieves are out, they're stealing. It's what they do. With, we have caught people in stolen cars. We have caught people shoplifting, but because of COVID restrictions, we're unable to, to take them to jail without, you know, working ahead of time with prosecutors in the jail to make special exemptions or exceptions. So this hopefully will, will, you know, get back down to somewhere a little more traditional, if not lower, once some of the jail restrictions are lifted and we can start holding some of these people that we're actually catching accountable. And then society crimes, we are, you know, as I've said before, this is all your vice and it is really a proactive activity. So you'll see in, you know, the second quarter, there was the big drop because there was not, not a lot going on with COVID and then some of it picked back up, the activity did and the investigations towards the end of the year, still not huge numbers, but still making a difference out there. And then total crime. You know, we are looking at our, the second lowest quarter in three years. It's, you know, a very positive reflection on, I think, you know, a lot of the work that our officers are doing and some of the community engagement that we have going on. And the, if we could pull out or at least mitigate some of the auto theft and the general theft, that number would be even lower. And I'm confident would be our lowest, you know, in at least three years, if not more. And accidents is another one that I've, I've talked before about it's, it was concerning to me how many we were seeing. This is, if you could draw a trend line, it would be, you know, I think everybody could see it. It would be from upper left to bottom right. And we're seeing a decline over the last couple of years. And I think, I do think some of that has to do with improved roadways and, you know, improved engineering of roadways, some targeted enforcement that we've had. And of course, in, you know, 2020, because we're going to attribute everything to COVID, there just weren't as many people on the road. So I do think that's a significant factor. One thing to notice here though is the fourth quarter dropped, whereas in other fourth quarters in both, on this chart, in both 18 and 19, we saw an increase. But in this fourth quarter, it actually went down by a few collisions. And then this actually ended up, this isn't the, the slide I had intended it to be. I wanted to compare just fourth quarters. This actually is, I think, year-to-date for each of these years as opposed to just the fourth quarter numbers. However, it is a good graphic, a good graphic illustration of where we are now with the total crime per year. It's just a very slight decrease from last year, but we'll take a decrease. And if you look, you know, historically going back to 2015, we are, we are dropping. So and it's, we're going in the right direction. One of the things I threw in this time was our calls for service. And this is usually reserved for our year-end report, but I want to throw it in this time just to kind of see with the decrease in crime, was there a decrease in calls for service? And if you'll notice the middle line, the orange line, those are dispatched calls. Those are ones where somebody calls 911 and says, we need, we have some kind of issue and we'd like an officer. You could see those have been steadily increasing. And with crime decreasing, it kind of underscores what I've shown you before and that a lot of the calls that our officers go to are not crime related. I don't have the, the chart in this one, but I, in the past, I've shown the chart of the types of calls per district that come in. And very consistently, the number one call was unwanted persons or welfare checks that end up not necessarily being a crime. So we're seeing more calls for officers to respond, but for less crime-related reasons. And of course, there is some of the, the overall decrease for total calls for service is attributed to the decrease in self-initiated or on view. Those are traffic stops or things like that. Then just a brief synopsis. Again, this is a very, you know, statistically great fourth quarter. Very low, the lowest quarter in at least three years. Persons crimes are way down and that's definitely what we want to see. We, you know, the, the property crimes and the, due to vehicle theft and theft or larceny are up, but we do have an explanation for that. And we are trying, doing our best to focus on them. But I really think that's going to be until COVID, you know, subsides a little bit and jails are able to open up. That's when we'll see some of those numbers go back down. The last bullet point on here that I threw in, I've talked to, it's been a while, but I presented to this group maybe a few years ago now, about the number of firearms that are in our region. And by region, I mean the western half of Pierce County, South Tacoma, Parkland and Lakewood. Well, looking just at Lakewood and the number of firearms that our property room took in in the fourth quarter alone was 126. Now, those can be taken in for a variety of reasons. It can be for safekeeping. It can be as evidence and a crime or recovered stolen gun or a court or surrender. But there was a significant amount of firearms that our officers came in contact with that ended up in our property room. And that is probably a 50% increase from what we see in a typical quarter, looking at the past couple of years. And really underscores the, the idea that, you know, our officers see a lot of guns. It's not, and these are just the ones that we've recovered for one reason or another and had cause to, to take into our, our property room. There's, you know, many others that are around when our officers are dealing with calls that there's no reason for us to take them. So we don't. But there's a lot out there that our officers are dealing with. So to, to think about our officers being confronted with a firearm is a very real possibility. So that's all I had. Like I said, it was, it was short but tonight, but I wanted to just kind of get some of the good news out to you that we saw in our, our fourth quarter. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief? So this anecdote came from a very reliable source, but in a different jurisdiction. But it was within Pierce County because, and it, and it, I think is enabled by the present situation at the jail. A big box, the customer was in a big box store and in full view of everybody, somebody took a heaping shopping cart of power tools out the door and loaded in their car and drove away. And they didn't even bother to call the police. I, I assume in Lakewood, we respond at least, so they'd be more inclined to call. But have we had similar incidents?
Oh, yes. They are very brazen about just walking in and grabbing whatever they want and walking out. And I, a lot of, a lot of it is because they know that even if we do get there and catch them, they're not going to jail. And their focus is on the immediate consequence, nothing long-term. So if they're not going to jail, then that's fine with them. They just roll the dice. The, a lot of the retailers also are, you know, they've de-emphasized loss prevention. My wife works for Macy's and I can tell you, they haven't had active loss prevention for, for a couple of years now. And she, working in the store, noticed a significant change in just how brazen people were about coming in and grabbing merchandise and running out. So the, the anecdotal scenario that you, that you heard of is very real and throughout the county and probably beyond the county. I'm, I'm going to say that's something that's going on probably throughout Washington.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Chief, this auto thing, I mean, I, and, and I think we all recognize that it's just, people just aren't going to jail for auto theft right now, or they don't spend very long in there. Or, or do they? When we're getting these, when they, when we hit these rings, are these people being held? Or are they even making it to trial? Or, I mean, I know there's a backlog too, because the courts are, are struggling with COVID.
Right.
I mean, are we making any progress at all? Or is this now, now just like one step up from shoplifting? Like I can go steal cars and?
We're, we're making a little bit of progress and that when we do catch the, the people that are involved in the big rings, the prosecutors are working with us and the, the jail is working with us to get them incarcerated. You know, you pointed out, one of the issues though is the backlog in courts. And even if we can book somebody in, you know, the, if the court's not going to be able to, to try them, then it's, you know, it still doesn't really have an impact.
You, you didn't include the Western state numbers. Are they still going down? Are they helping us on the, on the simple and the aggravated? I, I don't know. Are most of them simple assaults out there? And are they helping us now? Or, I mean, improving their situation still? The last time you had a graph that showed it was falling, are we doing better out there?
Much better. And I apologize if that wasn't included this time. It should have been because their numbers are very low. I think they were, they have five maybe in the court. Five reported incidents. So they're doing very well out there. And I, I should have, you know, to highlight the positive, I should have made sure to include that. But no, they're doing much better.
Yeah, I just, I just think in general, the big drop in just the level of assaults and maybe that has to do with a lot of bars or late, late night activity, whatever the case, I'll take it, right? That, that the level of, of violent crime is dropping or person crimes, I guess. There are assaults could be a lot of things. But just the fact that that's tamped down quite a bit is really a positive, I, I, I think for us. Because, and, and I'll note that in a year that a lot of jurisdictions really struggled with the number of homicides, ours actually went down. And I think we should be very thankful for that because. And I think we should be very thankful for that, because we don't have to look very far, and there's really problems. And, and they're continuing, so I'm, I'm hoping they don't, you know, they don't, they don't migrate.
Right. And I, on that note, as far, for homicides, I did review them, you know, for the past couple of years, just the other day, and we have no unsolved homicides. So that is something worth noting, even, even though year before last, we had seven, which for us, I think, is high. We, you know, they're, they're solved. We, we do, our detectives do a great job of working them to a resolution.
And the four last year are solved also, do?
Yes.
Oh, wow, outstanding.
Boots a couple of, of whodunnits, that, you know, they weren't known people, you know, the the McCord Mart, I think that might have been towards the end of 19, but that's one, the, the the homicide at the laundromat out by American Lake. You know, a couple of, of whodunnits where it was, you know, it took a lot of work by our detectives, but they still were able to identify suspects and make arrests.
And did, and we had one already this year, right? Right out of the gate?
Very incredibly tragic. I mean, there's, there's no good ones. This is a 16-year-old who shot his dad while he was tying his shoes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I, I, I think there's, there's a, a lot. I, I mean, I, I just think that the larceny stuff and the motor vehicle theft is a sign of the times right now. And, and until things kind of normalize, and I don't know when that's going to be, we're just going to have to, to grin and bear it.
Yeah, a little bit. We're, we're still working.
Hope, hopeful that the, 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 the violent stuff will continue to, at that lower rate. I think that will, you talk about reputation, I think that that will be very helpful.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. Thanks, Chief, for the, the positive report. With the decrease in some of the more significant crimes against persons, the violent crimes, do you find that you have more time or resources to put toward the property crimes and larceny issues?
Um, not necessarily. The, the persons crimes that come, that do come in still need to be worked. They just, some of the detective's caseload just isn't as big.
Right.
And with some of the larcenies, it's not a matter of working them so much as it is, what do we do when we're done working them? But, you know, we are, you know, focusing on it as best we can. And, but the, there really isn't, it wouldn't make an impact to reallocate some of the major crimes, resources or persons crimes to property crimes.
And the other point I wanted to make more of a comment than a question, but maybe it turns into a question. I just want to applaud the work that you folks do, because I think it goes without saying that our police force is comprised of incredibly dedicated and professional men and women. And this is a time in our society where it's becoming even more challenging to be a police officer serving the public. And so we just appreciate all you do. And the one thing I hear from folks, constituents, friends of mine, when I'm out running or doing things is the observations many of us have is just simple neighbors looking at some of the things that happen up north and to our south. And we're appreciative for what we have. But I think there's a common sense that we want to make sure that we remain vigilant. And I don't want to say tough on crime, but tough on crime. And so to the extent that we can be supportive in that endeavor and continue to provide the positive accolades as the city manager provides them to us from neighbors and, and residents saying great things about all the good work you're doing, we want to make sure we express that too. So.
Thank you. That's, that's nice to hear. You know, one of the things about Lakewood that you have, people have to appreciate is where we came from and, and what Lakewood used to be back in the mid 90s, mid and late 90s. And we still have a, some work to do, but we're light years from where we were.
Right. Well, if you were here for the, the media piece, 20 minutes or so.
I was.
You saw the net score or whatever, the net positive score, it's starting to incrementally increase.
Yep.
But much of the negative score from years gone by was much due to the prior impression that lingers to some extent, but we're working to overcome it.
Yeah, I actually had a, a meeting the other day with representatives from NAMI, the mental health advocacy group. And I hadn't met them before, but we were just talking about, actually Ralph and Carolyn. And the, the person asked me about Cops, the TV show Cops. And that's, I had to tell her they haven't been here in about 18 years. So, but it's still hang, it's still lingering out there.
Yeah, it is. Well, keep up the good work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Moss?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment, listening to the chief talk. The more we can show that graph that you've shown us and show the decline in any opportunities that you come up with, I think will also be a help in getting dispelling some of the negative.
Yeah.
That's a good, good stats. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Chief, I, I hate to be so simplistic in my analogy, but following up on what Mr. Whalen said, I, I think your department has shown a remarkable balance as a parent should, in that you're respectful and helpful to the community, but you don't put up with a lot of nonsense. And, and that's a delicate balance that I think some communities haven't found. And so I, a good indication of that, I think, is the kudos that come back past us many times through Mr. Coffield about individual officers. You know, the most remarkable, what I've seen in a while was somebody got a compliment from somebody they arrested. And that, you know, you, 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 you're there at the worst point in many people's lives, whether they're a victim or a perpetrator or, or involved in a traffic accident. And for somebody who's negatively impacted to say that, I think is, is a testament to hopefully training and culture, because that's what we want.
So part of what, what improves that culture is sending out those emails so that people see what, what we value. And it, you know, it's how we treat people that makes the difference. And it's not, we don't get compliments or complaints about how, how we did on a collision or a crime or anything else. We get compliments and complaints about how people are treated. So that's, that's what we try to emphasize.
Well, it, it, it appears to be working, so keep up the good work. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, and we'll move forward.
Thank you all, have a good night.
The next item of business is a review of proposed amendments to docket of the 2021 Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Associated Land Use Development Code amendments. And for this, we have Mr. Brewer.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Uh, get a little closer to the mic, it might help.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
I have limited space here, so please forgive me. The subject before the council is a request to amend a previously adopted council resolution, 2020-15.
You're, you're fading out, Dave.
Is that better?
So far.
Okay. I'm having to crunch, so if it looks a little silly on the phone or video, I'm, I apologize. The subject before the council is a request to amend a previously adopted city council resolution, number 2020-15, to include four Habitat for Humanity parcels located in Tillikum.
You're in stereo now, Dave.
You have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The subject this evening before the council is to amend a previously existing resolution to allow four Habitat for Humanity properties in Tillikum to be a part of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan docket. If approved, this comes before the city council for actual action on February 16th. And we've attached a draft resolution to your packet. This item was before the council back on October 19th, when the council approved a motion to authorize the manager to execute an agreement with Habitat for $640,000 to build these nine affordable units. When the report was prepared, we indicated that there was a problem with the land use documents. But Habitat had missed the deadline for filing, because they did not have full possession of the property. We did indicate that we would fold the request into the 2021 docket, but we inadvertently left it out. And so this evening, we are requesting that the council correct the error, add the land use amendment as part of an existing proposal, 2021-08. And if this proposed amendment were approved, we would change the comprehensive plan designation from two mixed residential and zoning to MR2. And really, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
So, you know, this is, I assume is going to be doctored for action next week?
Yes.
And without this change, how many units could be placed on this property?
I believe five.
And this allows nine?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brennstedter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Typically, items on the docket are either classified as city initiative or privately initiated. How is this one going to be classified?
It would be classified, if approved by the resolution through the council, as city-initiated.
City-initiated. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I got Don, Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Beer, how did, how did Habitat come into possession of these? Are, are these parcels that we ended up with, or did they just buy them?
They have, they, they were, the answer to your question is, is they purchased them.
Oh.
But it was also done in, in coordination with Mr. Gum and with also community development, given the fact that these sites are vacant. Used to be the site of an existing mobile home, home park that created a considerable amount of code enforcement issues. It, it was kind of to their advantage and to ours. And so we encouraged their assemblage for the purpose of this project.
Oh, so, so the lots are all vacant currently?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for shepherding this through, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
And we now move to review amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code, Section 8.76 regarding motor vehicles in parks and on trails. And we have Ms. Dodsworth present.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members. Thanks for letting me come in tonight to chat about this code update. Council had requested this update back in 2020. And so the park board worked on it over several meetings. They gathered a lot of information. The, the, one of the main, two main concerns were that there had been some reports of motorized vehicles like quads and motorcycles or dirt bikes up on the trails in the natural areas. And so we wanted to take a look at our code and make sure that the code that we clarified, who couldn't, couldn't do those kinds of activities on the trails. The other topic that we wanted to take a look at is mobility devices. There had been some recent change in state law regarding mobility devices and cities and towns in our area specifically had been having conversations about that. So we just wanted to double-check on what the current laws were, as well as what, if our code even referenced anything like that. So they talked a lot, they asked a lot of questions. We looked at a lot of samples from different communities as to what various cities and towns used for definitions, as well as what they were using for their park code. What the park board determined was that the mobility devices, there's various classes of those. And so the state law does treat mobility devices, class one and class two. There's technically three classes for like motorized bikes, that they do, that they will allow them on trails and they're, they're given the same kind of rules as pedestrians. However, it does say in the state law that if we wanted to restrict them or ban them, we could as a community. So we did have those conversations as well. And the park board felt that if someone was in a park with some kind of a mobility device, that they wanted them to be able to utilize our trail system as best they could. So they didn't want to restrict those anymore than they were restricted by state law. So you can see in the packet, we provided a lot of the information that we have reviewed from samples of definitions, as well as code. And what they came up with was making a change to the code that included, let me grab this, just one moment, please. The code recommendations are under motor vehicles. They wanted to clearly outline that all terrain and off-road vehicles were considered motor vehicles, and they did not want to see those being allowed up on the trails or on pedestrian pathways. And then they wanted to add the term mobility device, and they wanted to, as defined in the RCW, so that as the RCW changes and new information is being found on, especially like electric bikes, because that technology is changing, you're seeing a lot more of those and mobility devices, that they felt that they would reference the RCW, so we didn't have to keep changing our code every time one of those things might change. So they did add mobility devices as allowable uses on trails under the definition section. And then, but the, the big, the main thing was in the code, they wanted to add park to the, just the title, so that it was clear that we were talking about vehicles on park roads and trails, and that this wasn't referencing, you know, city roads. And then they wanted to add paved into the terms, just because, and take away highways, because we don't have any trails on highways in our community. But they wanted to to list paved, so that those motor, they couldn't do motorized vehicles on paved, on our paved surfaces. And then just adding mobility devices. So the code now reads, just because I'll be real clear to make it clear, "No person shall operate any motor vehicle on a trail in any park unless such trail has been specifically designated and posted for use. No person shall operate a motor vehicle within the boundaries of a park except on paved roads, streets, parking lots, parking areas where it's permitted for proper posting. And that way, again, it keeps them off those nature trails. It is provided, however, that this section shall not apply to emergency vehicles, maintenance vehicles, construction vehicles, mobility devices or other vehicles as authorized by the department. For instance, if we're having a car show, or we were doing a special project where people were allowed to drive out to a certain area based on our, their permit, then they would be allowed to do that. So, so that's the recommendations. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions or clarify anything that didn't make sense in my presentation.
Mr. Brennstedter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, thank Ms. Dodsworth. And I, I, I could see that there was a lot of research involved, and so the time taken was understood. I had a question about, because I'm not quite sure what the change is telling me with reference to e-bikes. Back when we asked to look at it, e-bikes were one of the types of vehicles. vehicles that were at odds where there was a problem. There was a problem of could e-bikes be used on trails such as the trail around Wahoop Lake? And were there speed limits that could be applied to them? Because some of the concerns from the community were that those were being operated frequently and unsafely by one, in the view of one group of people. And then there was another group of people that had them, but wanted to make sure they could legally use them. And so, and then in your attachment A, it really says e-bikes are no different than any other bicycle. And there is no, nothing that addresses speed limits. So we're not, doesn't seem like we're getting at that concern that was one of the concerns that raised the question in the first place.
Let me clarify, and hopefully what we included does include that. So an e-bike is considered an EPAMD or an OPDM, which the definitions are there. So class one and class two of e-bikes would be considered in the same category as mobility devices, so they would be allowed at the park. The difference between a class one, a class two, and class three of e-bikes is a class one and two basically can go up to 20 miles per hour. A class one means you pedal it and it stops providing any propulsion at 20 miles per hour. And a class two will just electric go up to 20 miles per hour. So however, we do post miles per hour, about 15 miles per hour is sort of the posted speed limit in a park. So our parks, so they really shouldn't be going over 15 miles per hour. Now, there are bikes at the park that are not e-bikes that, that travel more than 15 miles per hour. And so the park board did have quite a discussion on e-bikes, and that at this point, they're recommending allowing them like you would a mobility device, a class one and a class two. A class three goes up to 28 miles per hour, so those are not included in our definitions.
So the class threes, for instance, are they included in our code as prohibited? Because I don't see them mentioned in the laundry list of things that are prohibited.
They are prohibited in reference to RCW 46.61.710, because that does specifically restrict them from trails. So that's why, that's why we put that in there referencing the RCW under the trail definition.
Okay. But in our own motor vehicle definition, we didn't include it there.
Correct. Because it's not considered a motor vehicle. It would be considered a non-motorized vehicle because it's considered in the same category as a mobility device. That's why we didn't include mobility device under the term of motor vehicles.
Okay. And so then I guess the, the, how do you view rolling out education about this change? Signage or however? And then how do you view eventually moving to enforcement?
Well, we don't do enforcement, so that would be a question for the, the police chief. But we would utilize probably some temporary signs at the park to do some, some education. And then, of course, in our connections magazine, especially towards the summer edition, we would be putting some information there. Also, our plan was to put in information, again, towards the summer edition is on the smoke-free park policies. Again, doing more like advertisements, like ads, so that it's just kind of catchy for people. Signage doesn't really work that well, because there's so many ways to enter the park from so many sides. So usually just putting some temporary signs, especially around Wahoop, when the crowds get a little bit bigger, we would be putting some, you know, temporary informational signs to give people awareness.
Right, thank you.
I have a question, may I, one concerned about liability and, and safety. I'm, I'm familiar with the specs on mobility device. I'm all in favor of opening as much as reasonably possible to people with mobility difficulties and getting them on trails. However, there are some rugged places, both in condition and slope at Fort Silicon Park. And maybe it's being too paternalistic, but I, I don't know how a mobility device compares to an ATV. And I know people get hurt on ATVs. And are we in, if we don't close some areas, are we inviting trouble by saying this trail is open where somebody in the cyclocross might be fine on it? Somebody on a mobility device trying to go down with it is going to end up off their device, lacking mobility in an isolated area?
Well, the good thing is we have recreational immunity. We don't charge people to come and use our trails. So in that regard, if we haven't created some, you know, blatant, latent issue.
On the council who would sue anybody, so.
Right, correct. But like, like any place in our park, we would expect individuals to utilize those areas in the best way that they can based on their abilities. So I haven't seen many mobility devices up on the unpaved areas of our park. We certainly see them along Silicon Boulevard. We see them around the lake. We, I haven't really seen them off, so I don't know if that's really an issue. And most of those really aren't built, some of them now have those really nice sort of bigger tires. So I mean, they're more stable for sure. But we don't, our areas are, you know, where we see there might be a drop off or some kind of a scary place, we do put logs and barriers in that regard. So I guess my answer to that would be is we just count on people utilizing those devices as they feel comfortable and safe using them in those kinds of locations, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. It's like a lot of serious consideration went into this. Appreciate everybody's work on it.
Thank you.
And now we will move to public art at Colonial Plaza update with Sally Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. I'll be presenting on the public art at Colonial Plaza update. As a reminder, we met December 14th of the study session where it was, where the council gave direction to find a new artist to replace Perry Howard. Since that time, we've done a tremendous amount of research. And it is recommended that we use a shortlist, which is one of two public rosters, one of which is with the state. And prior to that, I'm just going to remind you that in the first process, we developed an RFQ, an RFP, a request for proposals. So we were actually casting a wide net and then asking the artists to submit designs. With the shortlist, we pick five or six artists from a list of artists who've already been vetted, who have already submitted their qualifications and have been reviewed by the state, people from the state who are doing the call. So we know they're qualified. And once we narrow that list down, we invite them to come to the site and have an orientation. We invite them to give a presentation. And then from there, we narrow it down to maybe just two, maybe two or three artists. And at that point, they submit a few designs each, and they're paid to do that. Last time, we also had a selection panel that was comprised of people in the community that represented business owners, homeowners, et cetera. And this time around, we'd like the selection panel to be the Arts Commission and the Public Art Committee of the Arts Commission, as well as two or three city council members, because I know the council members would love to be involved in this process every step of the way. And in this way, they could. Moving further along, when we use the shortlist and the roster from the state, not only have the artists been vetted, we know that we can narrow down the criteria. For example, we can say we'd like the artist to live within 100 miles of the city limits. And we for sure want an artist that can work with our budget of $90,000. And so they will narrow that list down for us. It'll still be a large list, but they'll narrow it down by the criteria that we submit. The other criteria we're asking that the artists have, other than those two, is that they've done similar projects and they will submit photos, they'll have photos that we can look at. And that'll be one way we select them is if we see that they've done art that would be transferable to the Colonial Plaza. We'll look at their resumes. We'll look at their ability to create art at the scale in which we're looking for at the Colonial Plaza. And diversity will make every effort to represent Lakewood's cultural diversity. So those are some of the criteria. And I just also wanted to go into a few important things about what we're changing. And that is, we took off the idea of having a water feature, because the budget doesn't allow for that at this time. We added lighting. We added the theme of unity. It's our 25th anniversary. We're celebrating the unity and community. And we'd like, love for that to be the focus. When we met with the youth council, they mentioned that the Colonial Plaza, they saw it as a gathering place for people of all different cultures. And they thought it would be great if the art could speak to that. And the other main thing is we're no longer requiring it to be a gateway. We're leaving that more open so that when we have these finalists out to the site for the orientation, they can be more creative with where they want to place it. We're looking at an interactive piece of art. And the entrance where cars are going by may not be the best location. But they'll be able to look at the whole street and think about where they'd like to place the art. So it can be enjoyed and, and very interactive with everyone. If people want to take a picture with it, if they want to climb on it, whatever that may be. And then lastly, is the timeline. I brought the timeline down for you in the memo. From what I understand from people that do this work, is that a year is a very, very good timeline. And so we're looking at aiming for it within a year. But realistically, it may be a year and just beyond a year. And that's what you see in the timeline. And you can see why, as it's broken down. Any question?
Questions for Ms. Martinez, Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I have two questions. One is, you mentioned that when you paired the long shortlist down to the short shortlist of three, who would be asked to actually do proposals, that you said they would be paid to do that. So let's say that it was three artists that were asked to submit proposals. How much of the budget would go to that effort, given that we would be paying for two proposals we're going to reject?
Right. So roughly for three, it would be $3,000 roughly. And the budget we have right now is $95,000. So we just decided we'll take off the $5,000, kind of set that aside for any stipends we need. It's probably more than we need. And we're just saying the budget's $90,000. So the artist sees the budget as being $90,000.
Okay. And the, the committee, the Arts Commission's Visual Arts Committee, that would be the core of this committee, does that include any identified youth council representation? Of youth council liaisons to the.
You know, that's a, that's a great question. None of our youth council members were at the last two meetings where we set up this committee. But I would, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think if there could be interested, any youth council members that would be added to the committee with a vote, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a comment, Mr. Whalen?
My only thought, Sally, and remind me if I'm wrong, but when we eventually cull down the list of those artists who are on the roster, for example, with Tacoma, they do have a resume, if you will. So maybe when that comes bubbling up to us with those five or six, or however many, we can maybe pull from their websites representative pieces that they've done, just so we can kind of get a flavor for the kinds of work they've done in the public art sphere, that would be great.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think that's going to be a critical component that, that in the selection committee will be looking for is what, what is their password, for sure.
For sure. That'll make it easier for council to kind of visualize as we get closer to the final selections.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, and continue down this path without a water feature.
Yeah. It'll be a well-lit path.
Thank you.
We now move to city manager comments and reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Some updates here. As you know, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year. And one of the things we're looking at is some kind of a, an event later this summer, early fall to bring it all together. And right now, we're tentatively looking at Saturday, September 18th. And, and of course, it would be over at the Colonial Plaza. We want to try and yeah, utilize that facility. We think it would be a fantastic venue. But what I would ask the mayor and the council is if you could check your calendars and to see if that, if that Saturday would work well. We are anticipating very beautiful sunny, warm weather. So that's one of our motivations for doing that. But also, in all seriousness, there's other activities within the community going on, either the, you know, weekend or two before that, or even after that. So it's kind of a proverbial hole in the donut, if you will. But again, I would ask if you could just check your calendar and maybe get back to me in the next week or two, and then we could save the date there. Saturday, September 18th.
18th.
Saturday, September 18th.
Big anniversary thing?
Yes.
Two, two years since college football. We'll make the sacrifice if necessary.
You know, it is tentative just because of, you know, the COVID environment that we're in. But if there are other dates that work well after that, you know, let us know as well. Earlier today, the city actually was addressed to the mayor, received a letter from the Washington State Transportation Commission and, or the WSTC. And they are looking to hold a virtual meeting focusing on the city of Lakewood in our regional area in April, on April 20th and the 21st. And some of you who were in the council back on 2015, the WST actually paid us a visit back then as well. And we actually worked in collaboration with Pierce County. And we did a tour of, we spent a half a day actually touring the city of Lakewood, outlining our infrastructure and transportation needs. And then also spent some time in the unincorporated Pierce County areas as, as well. And I understand they also toured Tacoma, I think, on, on their second day that they were, they were here. But they do rotate around the states, you know, several times a year. And so. so Lakewood apparently is on their schedule and so they're back in 2021. So again, just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up that again, on April 20th and the 21st, they'll be holding a virtual meeting and Lakewood will be front and center on that as well as our local region here as a whole. So I'm sure there'll be more to follow in terms of the agenda that they have and the role that they would like us to play in terms of again, talking about our issues, our needs and also our successes as well. Also, you might remember that this was actually also the impetus for us to continue stressing the need for the I-5 JBLM corridor improvement project as well. I want to congratulate actually all of you and the city and specifically our Community and Economic Development Department for being recognized by the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. They awarded their Housing Hero Award to the Community and Economic Development Department last week for it's the, you know, the department's efforts in providing Pierce County residents and specifically Lakewood residents during the COVID-19 pandemic, a very, very nice and positive gesture on their part. And I certainly want to congratulate our team led by the infallible Dave Buhr, our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, our Housing Manager Jeff Gumm, Program Coordinator Martha Larkin, our Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager Tiffany Spear, our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton, who, as you see, really has her hands in a number of things as economic development plays a key role in everything that we do. And then one of our finance supervisors, Dana Kaplan, and are one of, two of our finance technicians, Tammy Dove and Kathy Short. And then, of course, our Human Services Coordinator, Brian Humphrey. So just wanted to pass along that and just publicly recognize them for the great work that they do. The Planning Commission made a recommendation on the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan at their meeting this past Wednesday. And so that recommendation will be coming forward to begin this body's review as part of your March 8, 2021 study session, which is a month, a month from now. The Regional Council, so now that Vision 2050 has been adopted, they are now moving forward with actually implementing Vision 2050 and making some updates to their regional growth plan and probably going to be taking on there an update to their regional transportation plan as well. And of course, both the elected and the staff level will be engaged in some manner or another. Also, at the regional level, with the Pierce County Regional Council and GMCC, which is the staff group that supports that, that, that body, they're now focusing on updating the countywide planning policies, which occurs periodically. And so that'll take most of 2021. And again, there'll be some updates and recommendations coming before this body later on this year that ultimately will go before the Pierce County Council to take action prior to the end of the year. Also, our team in both Public Works and Community and Economic Development began to have some conversations with Sound Transit regarding the potential expansion of the Lakewood Station Transit Center, extending the areas for loading and unloading as well as potentially parking. They actually have land down there to be able to someday extend the garage. That's probably not going to happen in the near future, just given some of the financial challenges that they have. But again, just beginning to have the conversation. Also, this is also happening under the umbrella of a time that they're looking at maybe making some changes in the delivery of some of their, some of their deliverables in terms of the extension of light rail and other projects because of the loss of revenue because of COVID-19. But again, as this progresses, we'll certainly keep you appraised. The last item I have is we were approached by Waste Connections, which provides our garbage recycling services here in Lakewood last week. And they are going to be looking at launching a new program here in the next month or two. And it's to actually help the Mary Bridge Children's Foundation, the nonprofit component of that organization and helping them with a essentially a fundraising event and offering people to, for $200 for a $200 contribution that would go to the Mary, the Mary Bridge Foundation. They would get a purple recycling cart, a purple recycling cart. Right now, our franchise agreement is very, very specific in terms of what the colors of the carts are supposed to be. And specifically, the recycling cart is supposed to be gray. We did follow up with them to see what other cities and the counties are doing and you know, other communities, the latest I had on Friday was that, yeah, they're just kind of allowing, you know, cities are allowing waste, waste, waste connections to do this. But I wanted to bring forward to this body that our franchise agreement does not. Again, the language is very, very specific in terms of what the cart colors could be. Now, if this body wanted to allow this to happen, there's, there's two options. One is I could simply reach out back to them and say, okay, you know, we developed some kind of just general parameters of how long this is going to be offered, you know, things along those lines and go from there. The other, the other option, which would be my recommendation, would be to somehow memorialize this, maybe through a memorandum of understanding or something like that. And certainly we can do that at the staff level. Again, if this body is interested in making this, the, this type of a service option available. Again, it would be replacing the gray recycle cart with a purple one. And to get the purple one, the homeowner would need to contribute $200. So that's what I got on that. And if you wanted to have a study session on that, we could do that. Or actually, my preference would be just to maybe have a discussion here to see if it's, if there's any interest in the council in, in doing this or providing for this or allowing it. So that's my report, Mayor.
Ms. Farmer?
I would need a lot more information before I was interested in moving forward with this, particularly because I used to work for a garbage utility and it is hard enough getting people to remember what goes in what color bin that, that, that change management, that behavior change is so hard. If purple carts started floating around and people saw their neighbor, I'm sorry, I'm really having a hard time with this, but I would need a lot more information before I'm willing to go anywhere near this. Sorry, guys.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, I, I too would be reluctant to go with changing the franchise agreement. Because it isn't like we'd be changing all the gray carts to purple. We'd end up, and then, you know, how do we decide what the next organization that wants as a fundraiser to have a yellow cart and then, and that is equally no, and equally valued nonprofit to do that. But there is a a slope that we would start on if we were to do this, where eventually we would have to say no to somebody that if they had been first in line, we might have said yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Here's our chance for public art in Lakewood, friends. You can wrap any number of trash cans in any different color you'd like. And I know the city manager loves purple. And he probably would appreciate having his own personalized wrap on his trash. I'm facetiously saying I'd be fine with it as long as people are understanding of what it means to have that colored card out on which particular day of the week. I, for one, am a guy who has to watch what my neighbor puts out because I never remember what can is what. And I usually stuff his can full of my extra stuff, so that helps. But I think if we can support nonprofits and it doesn't create too much undue burden and craziness for folks, I'd be okay looking at it. It does provide a little color, you know, and it supports nonprofits, but I do get confused. So there you go.
Ms. Moss?
Good, Mr. Mayor. You know, I was driving around the Tacoma area today and I saw this purple can and I couldn't figure out what was going on with the purple can. So I would, the one thing that came to my mind was that we contribute to, well, I'll speak for myself. I contribute to Mary Bridge myself. So to go through an organization to get to where I'm, I'm there already. I don't, I don't, I'm not for that. And, and two, like Mr. Branstadter had stated, once we start something like that, the floodgates open, can open. So I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Ms. Farmer. I need a lot more information. This, this is our contracting party getting its equipment replaced by somebody else and giving us confusion in return. So I, I don't want to jump. Yeah. And I, I'm, I'm one of those who, my wife's pretty good about knowing which one's next. But if she's unavailable, I have to run out in the street.
And Mr. Mayor,
And the majority rules. It's not always unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could just come up with a, a third type of, of waste. And I don't know what that would be, but maybe it would be something like certain recyclables that over time compost. And those are what goes in, the purple ones. And then maybe we should just add one more.
Well, that is,
The city manager isn't laughing.
It, it, actually, I know in a relative's apartment I stayed in in Sweden, they were so nice to lend us their apartment. We had to learn a different method of sorting because they had the compostable vegetable matter was essentially one of the sorting bins. You didn't have a garbage can under your sink. You had like a six-part bin and you, you, so the few Swedish words I knew were related to recycling, so I could step away.
So as a public service announcement, because I do love a good garbage utility, which makes me crazy, but there you go. There is an app for that. So you can go and download the, the Lemay app and it will tell you what can you should be putting out on what particular day. So.
We actually have it on our desktop. I have to ask somebody where.
Can't help you there.
Anything else, Mr. Coffey?
So can I make a suggestion on this? If, if I might, Mayor and Council, how about if we follow up with Waste Connections and just say at this point in time, probably not, but let's maybe see how it works in some other communities. And then if this body wants more information, we can bring it back to you. I, because I don't know how many people would actually take advantage of this. Again, the only, you know, the information we have is that for two, for a $200 donation, the, the gray recycling bin would be swapped out with a purple.
Yeah. Thank, any objections?
Purple one would have a water feature. That may may influence us.
It is, you know, and I'd, I'd be particularly offended if it had a great big W on it, gold trim.
You know, I have to tell you, Council, I'm trying to, I always try and maintain my poker face here at this time of the evening and you make it very difficult. Help for me.
All right. But do you have any, do you have any other garbage for us, Mr. Coffey?
No, sir.
All right, then council comments. Ms. Farmer?
I can't follow that. I really don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Moss? You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Promise Board Meeting on Thursday. And some of you may have read about the negative comments that have been in the Suburban Times in reference to the school board, Copac School Board. And so needless to say, that was a great discussion at the Promise Board Meeting on that topic. And it was a lot, lot of negative comments, lot of, but what we, what we did is we were on a table for the board updates and to listen to the different organizations talk about the positive that we were doing in Lakewood to support the schools and students. It was, the decision was made to do a collaborative statement that would include Culver Park Technical College, Pierce College, the city of Lakewood, the city council and the multicultural coalition. Those are the ones that I'm familiar with. There could be others. And do a collaborative statement and sign off on it, out the positive things that we are doing that's happening around the school district with all the different organizations and, and just kind of put behind us the negative comments. And so I was wondering if my colleagues would be interested in signing a statement of that nature.
I think that's been our position. Of course, we have to see the statement.
Right, right. We would. It would be a collaborative statement. To a mental banner is in charge. He will take, make sure that everybody gets their say and have an opportunity to see it before it's released and sign off on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment, comment was made earlier that the Planning Commission had had forwarded their recommendations on the the station district plan. I do want to mention that a presentation was made on parking requirements by Commissioner Guerrero. And he has offered for us, for him to do a presentation in front of the full council. It would be my recommendation that before we look at the station district plan, that we allow him to do that at, at some point in time. I don't think we should do it the day we do it, but we probably should do it at a study session or something like that. He put a nice presentation together on parking requirements. I would note that they did significantly reduce the parking requirements on a vote at that meeting. And that's something that we're going to have to discuss. And so his presentation is, would be part of that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon, I did testify before the House Transportation Committee regarding House Bill 1418, which is a rail safety governance bill that seeks to implement the recommendations from the ATSB's investigation into the DuPont rail where they found that, that oversight that was insufficient or that there were just multiple agencies overseeing themselves. And this bill was designed to place the Utilities and Transportation Commission to give them oversight over rail safety throughout the state. I'm not really sure how it went through because the committee members were also given testimony from a number of railroads that felt that they adequately could oversee their own lines and didn't particularly think that they wanted the UTC to have any expanded authority to go on. And if you read the interaction with the committee members, they seem to be amenable to that. But so I'm not sure if this is going anywhere this session. We'll, we'll, we'll have to, have to see. That I would to comment on Ms. Moss's discussion about the, the school district and that that as she's the president of the LMCC and the LMCC did commit $2,500 towards the, the Unity mural that's going to be put together involving the Arts Commission and with the Clover Park School District. that's going to be put together involving the Arts Commission and with the, the Clover Park School District and, and Pierce College. And so that, that, you know, that, that is, that is one of those positive things that's going on of where there is a community commitment to work with the schools and, and, and add the voice of students to things. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. A few things. Today, the city manager and I met with, along with Jake Johnston, our federal lobbyist, met with Congresswoman Strickland's staff. I should say, we had a meet and greet without the meat on video chat here. But it went well. I, I think it, we're aligned on our major issues. And we look forward to working with them as we have with Congressman Heck and his staff. Tomorrow night and Wednesday night, when we have our interviews, unless somebody has an objection, what I would propose is that we rotate through asking the questions so that we use our stock questions, but that the speaker on the question is a different council member rotating through. And we can probably figure out a sequence of six that works. But unless somebody has some different ones, I don't think, if left to me, I wouldn't want to be the one that appears to dominate by being asked, asking all the questions. I think we should share that. The, I, I checked on September 18th, Mr. City Manager. And you know, it's, it's been a long time since I've seen a college football game live. And that is the, not the home opener, but Oregon is playing that day in Eugene. And I will be at our event on September 8th. And this is probably the only time in my lifetime that I had an opportunity to watch the Stony Brook Sea Wolves, which is the game after they play Ohio State in Columbus. So it's about, it's disparate as you could get. If I have to pick one of those, I think I'll watch Ohio State again. For Ms. Schumacher, if she is live here, I received a conflicting message regarding Coffee with the Mayor tomorrow. I got a message on the schedule Coffee with the Mayor, but I also got a cancellation email. And when I opened it, it was canceling one in December. So I'm just trying to confirm that we're on tomorrow morning or not.
Yes, the city manager will be providing a state of the city update.
Okay, great. I just didn't want to be the only person there. So it'll be at least two of us, three of us counting, John. And finally, something of a little more significance. I have served on the Pierce Transit Board as the city's representative. We have a designated representative by virtue of the presently standing charter. Since early 2012, when I replaced Claudia Thomas, who'd been a long-serving board member. There is some advantage to being on that board for a period of time, both serving on committees and externally and getting to know what's happening. It's, so I've served their three-year rotations. But the rotation is a term. It's not unique to the individual, I should say. It's not tied to the individual. It's tied to the term. And I came in either a year or two years into Claudia's term and finished one. So I'm somewhere in that term, but it's my intention to resign this month. And that would open up a slot for one of you. So we need to consider who my replacement would be on that. It is a once a month commitment as a standard meeting. And then, of course, like city councils, there are, there is a committee, there, there's an executive finance committee and another operations type committee that you may be appointed to. But those are small groups that meets once a quarter. And then you'll have a retreat and there may be some other event. It probably works out to about 15 meetings a year. But consider that and self-nominate. Maybe we can talk about it next week after you've had a chance to think about it and look at it. I, I think it is an important position. I've got some personal reasons that it, it's, it's easier to schedule right now with, I'm on an external committee forum and, and when COVID ends, it's the commuting time. And, and going to Seattle on the committee I'm on just aren't going to work. And so time for a new look, I think. So I'll give you a heads up on that. And is there anything else before we go to executive session? So with that, we will recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation to which the city or a member acting in official capacity is or likely to become a party. When the public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence, the city council will come back to adjourn, but will not take any further action after the meeting. So with that, we are recessed into city, into executive session for 20 minutes. Council members, please go to the alternate meeting site.
Ms. Moss, are you having trouble getting in the other meeting?
I can't find that. I, I'm coming back to the same meeting.
Yes. You want me to call you with the other item?
Let me, do I, I should sign off here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is, which email does it end? Because I looked on the one that we just.